But if you're bored.
We call the meeting to order. I don't officially have a chair at this moment, so let's start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item is the election of the 2016 Cook County Board Chair. Would anyone like to make a nomination?
Thank you, Brady. I would like to nominate Heidi Dukirk as to continue on as our board chair and also nominate Gary Gamble to continue on as our vice chair. We had some difficult issues in the last few months of this board. I feel like both of our leadership rose to the challenge, led us admirably. So I would like, I would like to have some consistency and keep our current leadership.
Can I hear a second? We have a nomination and a second. Any discussion? Anyone opposed? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thanks, guys.
We have a new chair.
Excellent job.
Well, thanks, Brady. You didn't want that, did you? Yes, very nice job. Keep you in that spot every year.
I'm good for a minute.
If I'd have gotten long-winded, the wheels would have come off.
That's not true. Brady does our truth in taxation meetings very, very well. All right, additions and adjustments. We have Highway Advisory Committee on here twice. So just so everyone knows, we're only going to go over it once, not twice. Is there any other additions or adjustments? Commissioner Gamble?
Commander, do you motion to approve the agenda submitted without a correction or notation regarding the Highway Advisory Committee?
Can I get a second?
Second.
We'll go with Starlee. On the opposition, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We now have the opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone who would like to speak to public comment? Okay. Wait. No. Well, would you like to speak to public comment, Mr. Betts? Would you like to speak to public comment? Just not give me the chance.
Just one syllable.
All right. That was our public comment this morning. Okay, 2016 travel mileage reimbursement. Brady?
Actually, you approved this in December.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, which was the same as 2015.
All right.
The hundred dollar for premiums and then the federal mileage rate and then the ten, twelve, and fifteen.
Okay, next we have designation of the 2016 county agricultural inspector. Mr. Betts, are you still up for that job?
Sure.
All right. Can I get a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Commissioner Gamble, can I get a second?
A second.
Commissioner Severson, any discussion? Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next is appointment of citizens to various county boards, committees, and commissions. The first one is renew John Barker and Fred Smith for the fire relief and the library board. We can do both at the same time, renew Hillary Freeman. Can I get a motion for one or both of those?
Still move, Madam Chair, for both. What, support?
Commissioner Gamble supports. Any discussion? Any opposition? Here. All in favor?
Aye.
Since we have, yep?
I also have a request from Jim King to be reappointed to the Minnesota Coastal Program.
Madam Chair, if I may question with regard to that. Thank you. When appointments are made by the governor, that's a decision that's made by whoever, the governor or council, and we're just affirming that support relative to any financial component that we'd be obligated to as accounting.
Yeah, so I think we'll just leave it as unchanged when it gets in here.
Okay.
And then since Dave is here, I'd like to move to the Highway Advisory Committee before we get into our long list just so that we can have his input if necessary. Dave, you want to come forward, please? So this morning you each received a list. Dave, you have the list also, correct?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I would, I would make a correction to the list after reviewing it with Dave. If you're looking at the list that you had, Commissioner Starlee had indicated a desire to be on this when we first started talking about this committee. So I would, I would put her name in as commissioner on this list if there's, for consideration. And then Myron Bershheim had applied as an at-large member. So we really have Peter Harris applying from District Two, Myron Bershheim at-large, and the only place where we have two people applying for the same district is in District Five. So with that, if Dave has some comments.
Yeah, Dave, I would like your input, please.
Well, we don't have a lot of choices here on that. We do have one person for three that hasn't applied for a, for an app, or hadn't submitted an application yet. And I'm not sure why he said he was going to. We had talked to him about it. So on that, so that might be coming yet on that. And then I guess the one choi, the choices is District Five on that between Bill Hanson and Stan Hall.
And do you have a recommendation?
Yeah, I think, I think given Stan's background in construction and things like that, I think I'd support Stan on that. I think, I think Stan would be a good choice for that.
Commissioner Gamble?
Madam Chair, under District Two, is, are those names reflected there? Both names for you, David? When you mentioned there was somebody else, it's not Peter?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, we'll start with discussion. Commissioner Severson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'm pretty happy with this list. Do we need to still choose between Myron, Myron and Peter from District Two?
We'll put Myron at large.
Got it. That's what you just said.
Yep.
Yeah, that's how you started up the question.
We just need to choose on District Five.
Okay, we just needed to choose on District Five. And then District Three, we have no one. Is that correct?
We have a potential.
We have a potential. Okay. So there would be, if we approved this list, there would still be an opening?
Still be one opening, yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Commissioner Starlee?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think the list looks good as it stands, and I would support District Five.
Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and support the list as presented.
Commissioner Mo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also support the list as, and I would, I think either Bill or Stan would be a good member of the committee. However, Stan is here, showing his commitment, showing his commitment too. So I would, I would support Stan as the District Five rep and the rest of the list as presented. And I would make that motion that we approve.
Okay. Any further discussion? Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
The one request I have is, do we have a commissioner that's willing to be a secondary if Ginny's unable to? Commissioner Gamble? Is everyone comfortable with Commissioner Gamble taking that position? Can I get a motion to that?
I would move that Commissioner Gamble is the second commissioner for the Highway Advisory Committee.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
Anything else, Dave? We kind of whipped through that really quick.
No, that's, that's fine. The only thing is, is I don't know what your plans are for commissions. If you wanted any, I don't know if the board wants any input on transportation stuff or not. It's pretty straightforward. Ginny's kind of got a handle on it.
Okay. Is there anything that you want to share with us before we get to it?
Nothing much, other than in the next meeting, we'll be, we'll be bringing plans for the Sawmill Trail job. So we'll be going up for a bit right there. So we had a little bit of delay and review time, but, but not to that, so.
Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair. David, I know we've had some discussions on this since we looked at moving this direction with the Highway Advisory Committee. And I just, maybe you could speak to your awareness of similar committees, you know, with some of your peers and different things like that and what you're hoping for and looking for relative to this.
You know, I'm hoping for a good positive discussion for the, through the board or through this process on this. You know, a lot of, a lot of counties, some counties have this, some county, most counties I don't think do, on this. In Minnesota, Minnesota does, most of the time, this is a three, a three-board member committee that sits, or two-board member committee that sits and meets with the administrator or coordinator and the highway, highway chair. So this will be a bigger board than, than most counties will have for something like that. So, you know, I hope it'll, I hope it'll go, go well. You know, fortunately, we didn't have a lot of interest in this. Three of them, well, two of the members that we approved today and one of them, one of them vets the potential that we had to actually go out and recruit. So on that, so, you know, hopefully we'll have a good positive, positive output or outcome from this and we'll, we'll get some informed decisions.
Commissioner Gamble?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. And Dave, just as a recommendation, suggestion that whenever there is a, a new group that is formed, it's beneficial sometimes to identify expectations, not only from your standpoint, but from those that are members of this advisory committee, just to ask, what is expectation and how can we best, you know, serve the communities? I might encourage that that be something that starts out. So moving forward, everybody sort of focuses in direction.
Yeah, we probably need a, I would think that Jeff and I should probably work on some sort of a mission, mission statement for the, for the group and.
Yeah, our intention is to, is to manage the agendas so that we know what it is we're trying to accomplish with each meeting. But we will have a general overview at the first meeting that we schedule so people know what to expect. And those who have expressed an interest and asked me, I've given them a rough idea of what we're hoping to do. And that is to talk about the priorities and the, and the operating parameters and the, and the options that we do have. Really, just to be able to have a conversation about highway prioritization and project prioritization before we get to the point of having a board having to take action on it. So really, the same as any other advisory committee, is the opportunity to have a thoughtful discussion without needing to worry about taking a vote at that meeting.
Thank you.
So Dave, we won't keep you. It's a new year, and I know you've got a huge pile of work on your desk, so.
Lots and lots.
Yeah, so.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you so much. Okay, appoint of county commissioners to various boards and committees. So you've all got a year under your belt. Last year, we went through one by one in part because this was all new. We can go one by one if you would like. I'll take consensus on that. We can, if there's specific committees that you want to change or you're unable to fulfill the duties or there's a question as to whether or not we should even continue with that committee, we could go that route and just pull those out and we could just accept it as a whole. So I'm just getting to see how you want to go about it, Commissioner Mo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would suggest we do the latter, that if there, if any of us have a change, either we would like a change in representation on a committee or as in last year, Commissioner Gamble thought that a committee was no longer necessary to have representation. We, we could make those changes and then, and then after we make any changes, then we could approve the list as a whole.
Okay. Commissioner Gamble?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I think the, for, you know, constituents that are going to the county website and looking to understand representation from their particular commissioner, that there's been work to try to make sure that what is is what is. And so I think there's some things that are to be noted in that, that there are changes that should be updated just so that we're current in that regard. The other thing is, I know that Commissioner Mo had expressed some interest in, in some of the committees that I sit on. And I, in looking at that, I'm wondering that maybe, given our sort of protocol and process, that if, if an alternate position, the one relative to northern counties, that I think Commissioner Severson, you're an alternate on that one.
Gladly.
And I'm wondering if that might be an opportunity for Commissioner Mo.
So are you saying you want to go, not go through the entire list? You want to kind of pull them out and get to them as needed?
Well, what, yeah, I, I mean, it's up to, you know, whatever the consensus of, of the board is. I was just noting some things, thinking that we were going to make a general, and here's, here's the things I would.
We hadn't decided yet on a charter.
Okay, all right.
Commissioner Starlee, do you want to go one by one or you want to just do it?
I think it'd be a good thing just to pull things that we have a question about.
Okay, Commissioner Severson?
Yeah, I agree with that. Just whatever we have an issue with to talk about. We don't have to talk about anything. Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Gamble, you have one that you're concerned and you have questions on?
I think just individually, look at it and then as opposed to going line by line would be my.
Okay. So on page one, to make this easy for both of you, on page one, under Arrowhead County Association, we've got three of us listed. I believe one of us is the alternate. Do you know which one of us is the alternate? I think it's me.
I think it's you. I mean, that's what I put down. I know.
That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah.
Okay. So Arrowhead Association, the counties, Heidi should be the alternate. Is there any other changes to page one?
No, but I've noted.
Page two.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Under AMC policy committees, I'm listed as the Public Health and Human Services, but I no longer have any of our committee responsibilities for that. And I would be open to switching with somebody. I know Commissioner Severson is safety. We could switch if you'd like.
That'd be great. Not interested in, I'm so not interested in safety. Just kidding.
Commissioner Gamble?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair.
Oh, that'd be great.
The other, the other thing I might suggest, Commissioner Mo, is that there's an agriculture component at the AMC. And it was at the district meeting that they asked for representation when I first became a commissioner. And I wanted to do that because I had an interest in agriculture, which I know you do, and in your district, we've had some issues in that regard.
Right.
And I might suggest that, that you take a look at that. There are similar issues that are covered in the environment and energy things that are covered in agriculture, and that might be something that would be beneficial. What I find is it's challenging to try and make both those meetings. I think as AMC is aware of how to schedule so that we don't have those conflicts, it helps. And this year, it really was good because I could do the agriculture the first day, second day was, you know, the environment.
Right.
And so might want to look at that as, as something to give opportunity because we had duplicate participation in some of, or presenters in some of those things.
Jeff, can you check into the members of that committee? I think that we can have more than one commissioner on those committees.
Madam Chair, to that point, we can, but some of those committees, you have, you only get one vote and.
That's what I wanted to check.
Right.
Because the Indian Affairs Task Force, I checked into that, and we can have more than one commissioner, and we can have more than one vote. So let's check into that and get that back so we can decide.
The general policy committee.
Not the general policy, the agriculture committee. Gary has it.
The committee structure you're talking about.
Well, it's a different committee from the policy committee. It's like the Indian Affairs Committee. It's a separate that you sign up for. I know they don't have a lot of participation, so they appreciate as many as they can get. Yeah, another question?
Yeah, yeah, well, thanks, Madam Chair. I appreciate Commissioner Gamble's suggestion. And if, whatever we see as the makeup of that, if, if Commissioner Gamble would be willing to see that as the, as me being the primary on the agriculture committee, I think that would be very appropriate, and I appreciate that.
Is that what you were thinking?
Is that what you're getting at? Yeah, yeah, okay. And as far as then, and just to back up to then, Commissioner Severson would then be the Public Health and Human Services.
And you would be safety.
And I would be safety.
Unless anyone else wants to switch. Everyone comfortable with their committees? Okay. All right.
Madam Chair, I do have a correction. It's just a time matter. Arrowhead Regional Development Commission meets third Thursday at 10:00 a.m., not 1:00 p.m.
Let's get that fixed.
Just so you know where I am.
Just so you know where she is. And then page three, Indian Affairs Task Force. I have been on this since I was elected and I attended as a voting member at the last meeting, and I looked at this and it says that you are the main commissioner. And we can, we can all go to this meeting if we want. I go to all of them. I have a lot of interest in them. Jan showed up with me at this one. So I just wanted to see Frank, if you were okay with me being the primary on this and if Gary would be okay with Frank being the alternate or with Frank being the primary and me being the alternate?
Thank you.
I'm throwing it in the air.
Madam Chair, I will, I have attended this, I attended last year.
Yep.
It was a Sunday meeting this past one, and I wasn't able to get there till Monday morning.
Yeah.
So.
That's kind of why I was wondering if you want to be alternate, because I know Sundays are hard for you.
Yeah, they can be. But, but I will, I will attend. So if you, Commissioner Gamble is willing to let me be the alternate or if I just want to put my name on there and come as a third person, either way is fine with me.
Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Given your district, obviously, I think the more involved you can be in anything in that regard, being formed is advisable. So I certainly would defer to that.
And he has been very involved.
And I think that the notation as to, any commissioner can show up is, is good given our county. So that's, that's good.
So Heidi is primary, Frank Mo is alternate. No one's welcome to come to that meeting. And I did verify that. We don't have a lot of turnout for that meeting, which is maybe because it's on a Sunday and maybe we discuss changing it to a different point in the meeting, but it's very beneficial. Anything else on page three? Page four. Jeff, Brady, Jan, Budget Committee. Do we want to continue this for this year or are we seeing a change with the budget now that we have an administrator that's healthy, well, and wise?
I would recommend that we have a Budget Committee.
Okay.
So that we have an opportunity for myself and Brady to do a lot of the work with, with the department heads prior, but also for an opportunity for the four of us to sit down and, and make sure that we're addressing the goals and concerns of the board before we actually bring things to the board for consideration. So I think there's advantage to this committee. We may decide next year that we don't need it, but I would keep it for this year.
Okay. Anything else on that page? Page five.
Madam Chair, I would simply make a note that Attorney Hicken is not here because she's in the ditch. She's okay, but.
Her new vehicle.
Yeah. She just said, I'm fine, but if you need me, text me. I can, I can answer from there.
Let's get her to sit from the ditch.
Sitting sideways in the ditch, yes.
Commissioner Gamble?
Yeah, I, I just note under the top, page five, the Cleveland-Cliffs Annual Meeting, that I think that invitation goes to all commissioners. I've, I've attended that. And so I'm not sure that it's actually a committee. It's just that it's an annual meeting that updates based on what's going on and certainly because of the location of Commissioner Starlee's district. But it, it is something that we all need an invitation to attend.
So what's your suggestion?
My suggestion is, with that regard, that it should say all commissioners.
Okay.
Would you agree with that?
Remove Ginny. Yeah. So we'll just put all. Okay. And then under the Cook County Wildfire Protection Implementation Committee, I will check in with Jim on that. Richard Parker, I believe, will be removed from all committees this year. So we'll need to get an update on that one. Page six. Department Liaisons. We now have an administrator. Do we want to continue with Department Liaisons? Do we have a discussion on this one, Commissioner Severson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I still think it's a good idea to, but I, I guess.
Go in the street. Gary, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I guess I, you know, defer to Jeff and ask Jeff at this point what his recommendation would be in this regard. I mean, there's some things I could speak to, but I'd like to ask Jeff to.
Thank you, Commissioner. My, my recommendation would be the same as the Budget Committee, that we leave it the way it is for a year because I, I think it would be useful to be able to pull a commissioner in with the conversation I'm having with the department head if we're talking about broad goals or, or challenges and be able to just have that third opinion and, and range of, of experience. So I would suggest leaving it for the year.
Commissioner Mo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just would like it to be clear that, that staff all knows that concerns, the first point of contact is the county administrator and not the, not to come to their county board member.
Or Brady.
Or Brady. They can go to Brady.
That message needs to go to the staff also. I think this is where trouble arose before we had an administrator. I mean, our, our policy clearly states what level contact you have, and I think that with this, there was some confusion and that contact was made.
Clarification. I think we should make that, make that point. I can do that. We started having a conversation yesterday at our MATT meeting, talking about the organizational meeting that we're going to have today, the plans, the workshop we're going to have on the 26th, and how we're still vetting out how we're going to work as an organization. But we can continue that conversation with them and ask them to share that at their, at their department meetings or invite me to the next meeting they have and I can share with them.
Commissioner Gamble?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I think that we're all aware, become aware of the, the importance of in creating structure and when we transition to the new form of governance with the county administrator, the historical habit has to, you know, sort of have change in that regard. And I think communicating as we go along and make those changes that are informed through these discussions is, is healthy. So I think we're all aware of that moving forward, but your recommendation to keep it as is, as we make those changes, I think is healthy.
Commissioner Starlee, do you have anything on that?
No, I, I agree that another year would be good and especially since Jeff wasn't here in the spring and we had some job reviews. And then I was appointed to work with the highway department on that, and I've been doing that. So another year would be good.
Okay. Brady?
Madam Chair, I would recommend removing from the Deferred Compensation Committee Amy Lewick and replace that with Courtney Bernier.
Okay. Okay, so we will leave Department Liaisons and we'll change Amy to Courtney. We have that power. Okay, page seven. I have one change under Firewise Community Committee. Jane Johnson is now Don Kufahl, K-U-F-A-H-L. And Richard Parker should also be removed, and we do not have a replacement name at this time. And under Fire Department Relief Funds, we will have to contact Maple Hill and find out who the replacement is for Dick Parker on that one also. Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Under Extension Committee, Frank Mo should not be an alternate. He, he, we have two representatives to that Extension Committee, and we had that discussion last year. It just should be noted on this document.
Okay. And do we need an alternate besides the two we have?
Aye.
Have either one of you had a struggle making it to the meeting?
We sometimes do, but there's always one of us that makes it.
Okay. So we will just take alternate off of Frank's name and we will not select an extra. Okay, page eight. Anything? Page nine. Page 10. I know it's all blacked out above this name there, but hopefully it's supposed to be blacked out. It's the Local Water Management Plan Advisory Committee. And Tim was in and he wants to leave his committees, the Land Use Guide Plan Working Committee. Page 11. Commissioner Gamble?
Yeah, this is under the Northeast Minnesota Office of Job Training, which is three quarters of the way down the page.
Yep.
That I think Commissioners Starlee probably agree that, I mean, I'm the primary on that. Have you ever attended any?
No.
No, this is the Northeast Minnesota Office of Job Training. I think that's just a typo.
No, never received any notice.
Yeah, no, I've been, I mean, I've been the commissioner on that, so I just know that when I looked at it, I think it was just a typo.
Both your names start with a G. Have that one, Beth? Have that one, Bev? And I will check with the EDA on the Northeast Minnesota Home Consortium. We have Abby and that was appointed, I believe, by this board. So I just want to double check on that appointment. It ends this year. So prepare for the next one. Page 12. Commissioner Roll?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Under Northern Counties Land Use Courting Board, Commissioner Gamble made a suggestion earlier that if Commissioner Seabornson was willing, that I could then be the alternate on that. I interestingly made that same notation on my list, Commissioner Gamble, so thank you. Seems like I did, if Commissioner Seabornson's willing.
Okay, so we will change Frank Moore to the alternate on that committee?
That will put you the farthest out in the state for a meeting. Exciting.
Anything else on that page? Page 13. Jan, go ahead.
Madam Chair, thank you. Under Revolving Loan Fund Committee?
Yep.
Gary Gamble, that would be primary and Bruce Martinson should be removed. And I don't know, Brady, as to whether there was an alternate on this one or not. I, obviously, I was.
Yeah, I think.
Alternate when Bruce is there, so we should, we should select an alternate, right?
Anyone interested? That is an at-will, when needed. There's not a regularly scheduled time and date. Frank, you raise your hand.
Yeah, well, if you're interested, I mean, I just took one of your committees if you wanted to be alternate.
It's letting money go out, you sort of.
Brady, go get the bag. We're gonna have to pull a dice.
I'd like to continue as a primary, but if you want to be alternate.
Yeah, but you're probably already representing Grand Marion. It might be nice to have one Grand Marion, one outreach.
So Frank, so.
Yeah, I'd be glad to do it. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Gary. And then the only thing I see on page 14 is we could probably remove the sentence, one-year probation for veteran service officer.
Right.
Just to make it clean. Anything else on there? Commissioner Gamble?
And then I would just ask a general question of fellow commissioners and, you know, Brady or anybody else relative to all of these committees, which we did do some purging, I think, you know, before. But are there any that, that are not standing anymore? I think that there is one that is, and I made a note here. Missed that as we went through. That is no longer operating, so it should be pulled.
Talk about the cemetery committee over here, but then we decided to keep it.
Yeah, well, people continue to die.
That's the same thing you said last week.
Okay, this is.
What page?
It's on, under the list of my appointments. It's the North Shore Trade and Tech Project.
That's been removed.
That's, that should be removed, but it came in the current printout. So you could just remove it from the list to whomever needs to know that.
And Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Under the tourism category that Bruce Martinson had been appointed to by the governor. His term is up. He called me on that. I noticed that my name was there. The appointment really won't start until April from the governor. So whether Bruce would be up again, I don't know. I said, "Let's just wait and see what would happen in that category." I personally think that that's something that the tourism people should be involved in rather than the commissioner. I think Bruce has done it for three years. I don't know what he's reported back. I asked him if he'd been to any meetings this year. He said no. And so I'm kind of wondering the validity of that position.
So Explore Minnesota, do you want to remove it or do you want to wait until? Go ahead, Gary.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I think it's similar to, you know, the coastal program. Those are appointments that are made by the governor. And whether we affirm those appointments, the governor, the state's gonna make that determination whether they want those committees. And whomever makes the application, that is gonna be reviewed based upon the criteria of the state. So I, I don't really believe that, that we are, other than if we want to affirm that, given the financial component. And we addressed this last year for appointments, you know, outside of those that are commissioners. We had it with the broadband and we've had it with this position, that that policy is in place. So my recommendation would be that we just let the process continue. If a citizen or commissioner should make a application to an appointment positioned by the governor, that that will be a determination made by the state.
But it shouldn't be on our list if.
Right.
Correct.
Right, okay. So Bev, on page seven. Ex more Minnesota Tourism Council, we're gonna remove that as a committee. And then Jenny, just keep us updated with what happens with the appointment.
And I have a couple of other comments.
Yep.
So this year, we're looking at the Comprehensive Trail Committee, the Comprehensive Sign Committee, the Citizens Highway Committee. What happened to the Vacation Rental Committee?
That's still going.
Okay.
It just might not be on this list.
Oh, okay.
So Bev, on page 14. Vacation Rental Committee. And Tim has the names of those members?
Mm-hmm, I have them here too.
Okay.
You're the primary and Jan is the alternate. And then I have closing comments when this is all over.
Okay.
I mean, this part.
Yep, Commissioner Gamble?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, on this list now, we just removed an appointment that is, you know, outside of our jurisdiction, so to speak.
We have the authority to do that. Jeff just has to advise AMC so that the right emails go to the right commissioner.
Right, and what I'm wondering is, depending upon how this is seen, that if this is a reference to see where representation or involvement is on the part of any citizen or commissioner within Cook County, it's good to see that overview so that we can see where we have, you know, representation. So we've got the coastal and then we have the tourist and we might have others. My recommendation would be that it would be included on this list, but noted, maybe with an asterisk or something as to the nature of what it is. And in that, in that way, we're looking and we can see what, what our representation is. Otherwise, if we're gonna say, "Let's pull it because it's not something we have jurisdiction over," then we should pull the coastal from this list. Because those are government appointment, governor appointment.
We could just list government-appointed committees below regular committees.
And I appreciate you bringing it back up because I think it is an important committee. But I guess the, the overlying thing is, is that do we want a county commissioner on that committee? That, because I think that's what we're looking at here. I think the committee is important to the community, but isn't important enough to the commission to want to have a representative on that committee?
You know, one of those committees is the Historical Society that's in my district. I removed it from the list early on when I got on here because they don't receive monies from the county. And so I didn't see a need to have a paid participant in that. So I attend all the meetings, but it's not a commissioner meeting where I'm, I mean, I don't need to receive credit for that or have the role in all that. I attend those meetings. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Yeah, and I, I just say, you know, back to the earlier comment about organization and structure. Just, it just, what do we want this document to represent? And when the comment came, "We should pull it because of the tourism," that's an appointment by the governor. Then I think we should pull coastal in that regard. But then the other way of looking at it was saying, "Do we want to see representation?" And note those in some way so we know it's not something we're doing, it's just we have representation. That's my thought.
Commissioner Roll?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think, I think clarity on, on what this list is, is important. And, and my understanding is this is a list where the county board actually appoints one of our members to. Because we are all members of other boards and commissions that, that we're not appointed to by this county board. And so if, if, as Commissioner Gamble points out, that there are other appointments that we feel it's important to let the public know that we have membership in, then that should be a separate category listed below. But these are county board appointments that we make, that we all approve. And so I think that's what this list should be.
So the governor's coastal should be removed because it's not a county.
Right.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
There's one other use. I use it to note when you claim per diem. So we've always used the list as something that, and per diem is what the board agrees to and that it's a county job. So you still might agree that going to the governor's council is a per diem because it's county business. So it'd still be nice to have it, see, if you want to make it at the end of the list or something.
Yep.
Or, or a separate attached list or something like that.
We have a separate list for special committees that we've done that on. So Commissioner Gamble, are you saying remove the governor's council from this list?
I, I'm, I'm suggesting that whatever the consensus of the, of commissioners are, that to Brady's point, I, I think we should have it on there, but we need to do it in a way that allows him to, to do what he does. And to Commissioner Moore's point, that we know, we have responsibility relative to making those appointments. So remove it from this list, but those appointments like that, for Brady's benefit, should be either noted with an asterisk or put on a separate list, which are appointed by governor.
Appointed committees, because we don't have a commissioner on this one at this time. So Bev, that's on page eight. Is everybody comfortable with removing governor's council?
Yeah.
We don't have a commissioner appointing to it.
Madam Chair, but to, to that point, I would, I would propose that we have a separate category at the end of this list, tiling it other, other committees and commissions supported by the county or some, some language like that. And then we can add those, have those.
And then the tourist position would be there.
Right.
Counsel would be there and whatever.
That'd be good.
Okay.
If you should have to do, Jeff's writing notes, he does that.
Okay.
All right. Anything else on this? Jenny, you want to do?
Yes. Well, I've been looking at the website and I'm very disappointed. And so I did have a talk with Rena about it. There's misspellings.
Have you looked at it in the last week?
I looked at it on Friday.
Because after you and I talked, it got updated.
I, I looked at it on Friday.
Okay.
The three of us new commissioners have nothing. We don't belong to any boards or commissions. There's misspelling on Frank's page, Business. I think it looks really tacky. She agreed with me. But she said, you know, "We're in the process of coming up with a new page or two or three for the county." I don't know if we want to wait. Now, all of this that we've gone through, what happens to this? Where does it go?
It goes on our, on our page. That's why I asked if you looked at it recently. You're up. All your committees are listed. I just checked it the other day. Rena did go in and add board of commissioners and contacts and committees.
Do you have everybody?
Yep.
Just you, Jenny. You have to redo it again.
See? True. Frank is here. Business is spelled correctly.
Good.
I'm sure it's horrible though.
Well.
Look, yeah, I can fix it.
We're getting petty. But it's up. So this list, Bev will have to update it.
Okay.
And we'll approve it as.
Actually, Julie updates it.
Julie updates it and we update it. And it will go to Kirk.
And if you have another picture.
Another picture.
Not sure.
I'd suggest a dog if you'd like. Many of my dogs are better than that.
Gus. So, sorry Jenny, that's why I asked, because I know we had talked about this and I looked the other day and saw that it was all updated. So I believe that's been resolved.
I agree, we should, we should give those corrections.
Yes, get it all done. Okay, very good. Gable?
Yeah, Commissioner Starley, I appreciate you, you're bringing it up. And I, I know the presentation that, that we had from IT was very, very impressive. And this is one of those functional components that I think reflects professionalism on the things that you noted. And I think respectfully, when we address those things, it's, it's important. And whenever there's a change, it should, it should happen as quick as we can because it, it shows that mindfulness. So I appreciate the discussion.
Jeff, can you find out from Rena who we should give corrections to? Because I just, Frank pointed out that Jenny still doesn't have her phone number listed. So let's find out who corrections need to go to after we update this.
Maybe one of us can review our information and forward that corrected information.
Yep.
Yeah, Madam Chair, if I, if I could, the, the information that we shared at the MAT meeting yesterday is I asked everybody to review their pages. And if they saw corrections that needed to be made, that they submit a help desk ticket with the information that needs to be updated. And that's the most efficient way for them to get, they'll, they'll get those done. They addressed the ones that I submitted yesterday. So if you have a correction, submit it using the help desk that's available on the SharePoint site. If you have difficulty with that, then let me know.
Okay. So.
We'll get, we'll get all, we'll get all the factual stuff cleaned up. We, we certainly don't want to be inaccurate here. I'd rather not have the information than have bad information. Was what we, our conversation was.
And some of these committees use this to find out which commissioner they're supposed to be contacting for committee dates and times. So. All right, can I get a motion to accept the list as amended? Commissioner Gable?
It's a moot.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Commissioner Moore, any further discussion? Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. 2016 meeting dates. We have a list of those. I just need a motion to accept those meeting dates. I believe that that was in.
Or did we receive it from Julie a while ago?
Okay. It's not in this list. Commissioner?
Yeah, I'd make a motion to approve the 2016 meeting dates with a notation that our special meetings have been quite a few this year relative to how that impacts some of the boards that we sit on. And so I think mindfulness, I think maybe going, a lot of that's attributable to our budget process and having had that under our belt, I think that would be changed.
You and I are missing a meeting. We've missed like four and we're on.
Yeah, it's been, it's been pretty consistent. We're missing meetings. So, and I'm calling and apologizing, but my point is, just sent there to your comment, that looking at special meetings, be mindful of how that impacts our representation elsewhere. We need to do the business we need to do. Having said that, approve the meetings.
Can I get a second?
A second.
Commissioner Starley, seconds. Any further discussion? Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
Minimum salary resolution, Brady, did we do that also when we did with mileage?
I don't know that we did.
We can do it again.
I think we did, but we'll do it again to make you feel better. I go beyond it now.
Minimum salary resolution for elected officials. I believe on the 22nd, we did this.
We did, we did.
Yeah.
Because I was on the radio the next day and I was disgusted about how I got a motion.
Well, you know, I, I think what we, we talked about, we proved our salaries, but isn't the minimum salary something different?
It's for the, the other four elected, the attorney, the auditor, the recorder. And they're all, and the sheriff, they're all like $6,000, something in that neighborhood. Whatever the statute or law is.
Yeah, we did that.
It's that ridiculous.
Yeah.
Yeah, we didn't talk about that.
So I don't, I don't think it's listed here, but if you just approved as in statute.
I'd make a motion to approve that ridiculously.
In statute.
Statute, defined by statute.
I'll second that. Any further discussion?
The word was ridiculous there.
Well, it might not be ridiculous under circumstances, however.
Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
May come a day I'll rely on that.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, when our budget levy comes up, we might have to go back to that. Okay, you do have your WTIP interview schedule. Can you pack it? Is everyone comfortable with that? Motion to accept?
For both.
Support.
Okay, we have Starley and Gamble. Any further discussion? Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, at this time, we will take a little break. Those are mine.
You know, you know which one it is. So from our, from our SharePoint site? Sorry, bro. Ayo. Oh, okay. From my, from my SharePoint.
Which, yeah. Well, he's getting together. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
On television for the first time in like ten years. I watched the Vikings game at home.
Well, that's, that's about to be over.
I've been living a guy, I had that, my first memories of life, my dad kicking the footstool across the, across the living room of Kansas City.
I was gonna say, which Super Bowl, which seventy Super Bowls?
Seventy.
How old was he?
Sixty.
They had four, they had four of them. Oh, no, I know. There may have been, there may have been a championship.
The Kansas City, so wasn't it nineteen seventy? Look it up. It was nineteen seventy sixty nine, Kansas City, Minnesota. Maybe it was.
Oh, no.
Seventy. That was Kansas City, so it was the sixty nine.
It is kind of funny, but it is kind of true.
Oh, now, now.
So you're right. The Super Bowl was in the seventies, but it was in sixteen ninety six. But then, so they had, they had four appearances in the Super Bowl.
You click, you have a question.
Oh, you did? No, I have to click voice be on. Sorry. I just watched Seattle play the Cardinals. Oh, good. Did you watch, did you, did you watch Seattle play in five hundred degrees weather with snow?
Yeah.
That's what's gonna be, that's the weather. Okay, and you know what, isn't that not bad? Oh, yeah, I'll take it. But Russell Wilson was, he's such a slippery cat. Do you have a pair? No, I still think.
Yes. I prefer that you don't bounce in your seat.
So, Ray, it's been a long, it's been a good one.
Rest against me.
I, I, I just, I don't know. I think cool there is.
I thought when I came.
I didn't even start watching it.
There are all the reasons. Well, I played my Vikings game, you gotta watch a little bit of it.
Just see, if it's struggling against Green Bay, it's had such a few years.
Uh, Ginny.
You probably still want to start. No, because he was right. What I was looking at was.
Was my right.
Oh, and I stuffed up it, that night forever candy. I'm not too tired for that.
You do have to figure it out. So Bev, you have what you need?
I hope so. I'm a double check here. Yeah, I think the rest is good.
Because you can have this whole market.
Sorry, I think I've got it.
I approached you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And I also bought that CO2 cartridge. Yeah.
Here, that also works with coconut milk.
Yes, you can use it for a whole lot of things.
And coconut milk or straw.
But then you take that.
Yep.
You take that on.
I have one of those. Awesome.
That a tomato juice?
No, I, I bought the, actually it was a Stillwater, this kitchen place.
Stainless steel. We just change the cartridges, they last.
Okay.
Oh, so it's a cartridge. CO2 cartridge, they always have them. Let's just let them have a job. They don't use too much because I can just throw the coconut milk in the kitchen aid and whip it out. Because it's in the can, when it's in the can. At the blender, but the.
Yeah, there's no.
Stainless. Do I use for everything? Like I do a roja, I did a roja for us once and I use coconut milk instead of. I get a request for that a lot. The kids want that a lot.
I think you want one.
Jeff, so you can start it again.
Well, yeah, but I, I think that you would want someone from like many other countries for the, the non-funny heads.
I just came up with a suggestion.
I missed the.
Hey, guys. I know whipped cream machines are exciting, but.
There's whipped cream? You didn't tell me.
No, there isn't, but they're talking about the canisters and the cartridges and all that good stuff.
Whipped in your cup?
Uh, maybe getting out of coffee or something else. I'm not gonna say no. Starting. You guys are lined up for coffee, I see. Brady, do we have any claims?
Are you, it's always going.
No claims.
Always going.
All right.
Yeah, that all.
Two thousand sixteen non-county resolution, non-county levy resolution. Brady?
This resolution is just, you're acknowledging that we're gonna collect and distribute the taxes for all of the other entities in Cook County and these are their final levies, the two thousand sixteen column.
Okay, can I get a motion? Commissioner Gamble, can I get a second?
Second.
Commissioner Starley, any discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I just want to remind those who are listening, when we're approving our county levy, you'll see on your taxes, these are all additional levies. So when we had, when we were discussing and having difficulty with our levy number, it's, it's not just because of that number is, was an increase, it's because it's, it's added to by all these other levies. So when you see a property tax statement, it's not just the county levy, it's all these others and, and that's, that's the aggregate challenge for us here.
And, and then one additional one is the state general tax that is not here because we, we don't distribute it here.
Right, and that state general tax went up dramatically, just because our economy in Cook County is doing well relative to the other counties in the Arrowhead region.
Commissioner Gamble?
Yeah, it's sort of analogous to when you go to the grocery store and you got more things in your cart that you even afford to pay and you have to take a few back anyway. And it's, it's something I maintain in looking at the budget overall is, is the cumulative that is the impact on, on the constituent overall. I mean, our, working on our levy is mindful of that aggregate, you know, factors, so.
And I also just wanted to thank those other appointed and elected officials who are wrestling with those levy questions for their own jurisdiction. You know, that together we do our best to make government services affordable and efficient and hopefully we'll continue to do so in this new year.
Okay, any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have the county levy resolution and that is the, this added into our whole entire levy, so.
Yeah, Madam Chair, you, you've approved essentially the same levy and budget. This just puts it into resolution form so that ten years from now, it's easy to find.
Yes, we are. Are we? Can we get a motion? Commissioner Gamble? Second, Commissioner Mo? For those of you wondering how that was decided, there's little fingers that go up over here. That I can see over the corner of my eyes. Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
Hey, legal paper resolution. We have the quote from our local paper.
And the quote, Madam Chair, is, it's the same as last year. Eight dollars and seventy five cents a column inch.
Okay, thank you again for keeping your prices fair and equal so that we can continue to keep the levy down. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second, Commissioner Mo, Commissioner Severson, any discussion? Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Rhonda. Designate county webpage as official publication for county business. Can I get a motion? Commissioner Gamble, can I get a second?
Second.
Commissioner Starley, any discussion? Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution designating bank depository. Brady?
Yes. Last year, we put out bids every three years and so last year we chose to go with Grandbury State Bank and so we will continue with them under our policy for the next two years. So Grandbury State Bank will be, ask for approval of that as our depository.
Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Commissioner Severson, can I get a second?
Second.
Commissioner Starley, any discussion? Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
All in. Okay, Brady, we have GMPT dues and there's a note in here to consider whether to include legislative service assessment.
Yeah, in the letter you can see that they, they just asked for, they have a basic dues, which is what we budgeted for, the hundred and fifty. And they're asking for this special assessment where, as they need the money, but as an additional dues. I don't know who actually does that of the other counties or entities, but I know that we've not budgeted for it.
Okay, Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We've had this discussion, it was with MRC, we, you know, no longer have a representation on that board that this was one of the items that they had worked a lot on and the monies that were coming through the legacy fund were being divided up between the DNR, Metropolitan Council, and with Greater Minnesota. And part of the argument was in the allocation and distribution of those dollars was that we did not have plans in place that would justify those monies going to Greater Minnesota. And so this organization has worked very hard to come together with plans. We've submitted to some of that now under that new structure. And my point with this is simply to say that, that we are, we are trying, attempting to be more proactive, more professional and the financing of that is an important component. I would make a recommendation going into this budget cycle legislative session that we give the participation fee and make a determination as we monitor how effective we're doing on the lobbying side of things through these various boards, whether we would kick in additional funds. Otherwise, I would make a recommendation that we go with, with the request based upon their, their level of contribution and population.
Is that a motion or just a write?
That's a motion.
Okay. I'll second that. Okay, so we have Commissioner Gamble to pay the dues with no additional extra. Commissioner Severson seconding. Any further discussion?
Oh, I misunderstood. I thought you were advocating for the extra.
After review.
My recommendation was to, as we move forward, to, to monitor that and we have these discussions at, at different boards that we sit on to see where we're at and how effective we are, but because it's not budgeted for, I would look at it if it's, if it's needed in order to, you know, to be effective in outcomes, then, then do something. But at this point, I'd rather monitor it because it's not budgeted for. That would be my recommendation.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner?
Yeah, I would, I would agree with Commissioner Gamble's motion. I would ask that the board, if we reconsider this request at the conclusion of the legislative session, to see how effective Greater Minnesota Parks and Trails has been and advocating for, for legacy funds for the rest of the state.
Uh, Jeff, can you put that on your list?
Yep.
Okay, Commissioner Gamble?
Yeah, and I would just, for clarification, so the board understands what our intention is, is that my recommendation is that on the boards that we sit on where this gets discussed or when it comes to us to, you know, representation that we have because of our involvement, that if during the legislative session it's determined that we, they could use the additional money to be effective in outcomes, that we might consider at that point as well as evaluating effectiveness following. You know what I'm saying? In other words, if, if your statement, Commissioner Mo, is, is one that we wouldn't have that option in the midst of a legislative session, and I'm not saying we're going to or not, but I think we, we keep that door open if we feel that we need additional lobbying. That, that was my thought.
And, and I don't think my statement would preclude us from taking up a request between now and then. It would just, we're just saying that we are going to reevaluate this at the conclusion of the session. Doesn't mean.
Yeah, I just want that clarification, so.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next is a public hearing for miscellaneous fees. We have a suggested date of January twenty sixth so that we can get proper notice out. That would be scheduled during a regular commissioner meeting. Commissioner Gamble?
Make a motion to approve that.
I'll second that. Brady, do you need us to set the time right now or are you comfortable setting that based on the agenda?
Um, I think we should set it.
Would you, ten AM? That's the usual.
Yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Gamble, are you okay with that as the, okay? Any further discussion? Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Sorry, I missed it again. Who's the second?
I am. That's why you missed it. Usually it's obvious. Or I should say that sometimes it's not. All right, employee concerns, commissioner concerns. Before we get into the listed items, are there any commissioner concerns? Go ahead, Commissioner Starley.
Thank you. Well, I guess I just need to understand the process of posting our minutes. I went through what is on the website and there's several items that are missing and I guess I just need to understand from Brady or Bev or somebody, how this all happens when there's gaps. Especially looking at August twenty fifth, which would, the minutes were from May first, fifth, and the eleventh. And then when I went to open it up, it says cannot view, do not exist. And then October twentieth, minutes were then submitted for September twenty ninth and August sixth and it said files damaged cannot be repaired. So I guess my point is I want to understand the publicity, the publication of this and the website and the minutes that we could have here, how important that is because there are things that we pass as resolutions and as, you know, duties of the commissioner that's not reported. How do we keep track of all of this? How does this happen? So we have a meeting today. What does Bev do with the minutes today?
She types them up. They. She types them up, they come in the next packet, we as a board approve them in the following packet, and then they're posted. And this sounds more like an IT question than a Bev and Brady discussion.
Yeah, I wasn't aware that those, it does happen once in a while, and then we do a ticket.
Yeah, a help us ticket.
Yeah, if something has happened, and so, this may have happened when they switch to the three sixty, I'm not sure, but.
Yeah, and the new website, maybe we should talk to Rena about a page that just has the minutes. Instead of going through old packets or old board meetings or clicking the link. Carrie, you too?
Yeah, thank you, ma'am chair. To answer the question or to ask, you know, Bev to give some perspective on it, that the minutes like from this meeting, that you draft those minutes, and then it'll get in the next board packet dependent upon what your schedule, what's going on with your responsibility. So, it would not be a correct statement, although, correct me if I'm wrong, to say that following this meeting that we would see in the next meeting those minutes. It's, it's dependent upon what's going on as to when they come. And then, in the main minutes, there was a question, and so, that's what, put that on hold until clarification. And so, sometimes minutes will be delayed and it's not as timely. If the board is saying that we want to see minutes come out more on a timely basis so people can follow, you know, you know, motions of the board, then we would have to create an environment in which you're able to meet that requirement. So, I think that's, that's something that should be noted.
I think if the community wants to follow the actions of the board in a timely manner, these videos are posted like almost on a day sometimes, they're posted the first week. And that's where you, I personally get a lot more from watching the video than reading a piece of paper. Bev does a great job of documenting what happens, it's documentation of what happens.
And I think. Madam Chair, if I could, I think one of the things that Commissioner Storey was referring to is something that we fixed yesterday. And that is, is that there was a naming convention issue with the minutes. So, they were not sorting appropriately, and some of them weren't showing up at all. And that's been resolved, 'cause I put, I put a ticket in on the fact that the minutes were showing out of order, or there were some missing. And it wasn't necessarily the timeliness of the minutes being out there, it's the fact that we were missing three months from the summer because they were named not following a convention, so they didn't get picked up in the sort feature. So, I think we've resolved that. Kirk's gonna double check if those things are getting done. And one of the big issues we've got with, with content on the website is, the IT department doesn't do the content on the website. The IT, the content comes from other departments. So, Julie puts those things out there, and they need to all be named the same. And if you don't follow a naming convention, then they don't get sorted appropriately. So, we're gonna follow up on that, we'll watch it. But if you notice something that's not right, submit a ticket or give me a call. And, and whether it's any of those things. I found that because as I was preparing for a meeting, I was looking for a copy of the minutes from our ATV hearing, and I couldn't find them. And so, I submitted a ticket, and we got it resolved. And so, if you see something like that, just, just submit the ticket. And if, and if you can't, let me know and I'll submit the ticket.
Well, it's a new year, so let's hope, you know. Also, I asked about the video. I remember about a year ago, I was able to go on and look at video of our meetings back to, I think they started in twenty twelve. And it's not available, so that's an IT situation, or with, with the Boreal.
That's not an IT situation, that's, that's, at this point, that's Boreal. Uh, the conversation that I had with, with Rena about that is, in the, in the new format of our webpage, we get a hard copy of all of the recordings, and we're not gonna rely on Boreal to publish those anymore. We'll take the hard copies that we get, and we'll, we'll, we'll log those things ourselves so that we can manage that. And she's, she's intending to, to do a YouTube channel so that we, we can manage the content that we have, and then we can manage how long we're gonna archive that stuff for and, and make that available for, so. But right now, the number of videos and how far back they go is not in our control.
I can actually answer that, because I post a lot of the videos online. They only have a certain amount of data that they can post. So, when we get up to about a hundred videos online, we have to start deleting them so that we can post new ones, 'cause there's not room for them in their cloud storage or whatever. So, I make hard copies, and then I give those hard copies to Rena, DVDs.
Okay. We should start selling them, we'll make some money.
You're gonna do that, but maybe you realize that's far.
So, if a person wanted to go back to twenty twelve, is that when it started?
I don't know when it started, but if you wanted to go back further, talk to Rena.
If I wanted all of twenty twelve?
I would talk to Rena, 'cause she should have DVDs of all the meetings.
So, then I would take the, well, how would I do that? Would I have to do it here?
You could take a zip, and she can download them all for you, and then you can watch them on your server.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Gamble?
Yeah, I would just, you know, pertaining to that, whether, you know, commissioners, what would we like to archive and have available? I mean, that's a, that's a question to ask. I, I would agree with that. So, if that's the case, then we need to create a structure that allows.
And that's what she's doing.
Yeah.
Yep. Anything else, Commissioner Storey?
No, thank you.
Anyone else have, Commissioner Mo?
Thank you, ma'am chair. In, in regards to our, to our chair and vice chair elections, we didn't really discuss it when we made the election. But I would like to include at some point a discussion about how we wanna proceed with that, what's the custom of this board? And my, my argument would be to have, have the terms be two years for a chair and vice chair. I think that allows for some consistency in leadership. We could, you know, we can always move to change that if there's, somebody leaves office or there's some reason to do that. But I think two term, or two-year terms for those leadership positions, I think would be, help us to move forward at a, a productive, on a productive basis. So, maybe we can include that in.
In our workshop.
In our workshop, how we'd like to proceed with that.
I think that's part of the next discussion, too, is discussion of board meetings and topics, so we can add that to topics. Jeff, were you looking for a list of topics for sixteen or your fourteen A?
Um, no.
Okay.
I'm not sure how it went down.
It was the ten with it on the agenda.
Did you add that one, ma'am chair?
No.
Well, let's put county board leadership on the discussion topic, there we got one.
Does anyone have any items that they had for fourteen A? Otherwise, you have a week to think about it. Commissioner Gamble?
Yeah, I think, you know, that's a, that's a wide open ask, and.
Isn't that great? Flexibility.
And, and it is, it's good, and it's sort of like stepping back and saying, okay, if we were gonna, you know, reinvent the wheel, how would we do it? And so, I think those, to Commissioner Mo's point, I think to have processes and, and decisions that come before us informed based upon an understood, you know, policy that says this is why we're doing it. Not to have policy to be restrictive, but to have policy that, that is healthy and informing processes, I think is good. And in that regard, if you think of that, you know, just look at, at, you know, the role we serve as, you know, commissioners. What do we wanna discuss? What do we wanna understand? And this is, we have an opportunity before us, and we've made the change, you know, in, in how, with the county administrator. So, it's an opportunity for us to understand how we can be better stewards of opportunities, so.
Now, I'd like us to take an hour in a meeting and discuss legislative action.
Yeah.
I mean, we often during meetings say we gotta talk to our legislator, and then our legislator comes and all of that's lost. And we have some key things coming up, public health funding.
We will always have key things coming up.
We will, but I think we should have a brainstorm session, at least one meeting that we discuss.
Yeah.
And we can approve a priority list as a board.
Yeah, and how to be more effective in, in, in how we advocate for those things, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
And maybe we do that quarterly.
Advocating.
Yeah, I, I agree, I think we, I think.
I really like that.
And it would be good for us to, yeah, what is our plan for advocating for those priorities during this upcoming legislative session? Moving in coal?
Yeah.
How are we, are we gonna do that in an organized way? Are we going to bring community members with us? You know, how are we gonna do that?
We're gonna get a bus.
It's a good idea.
Yeah.
Paint the bus, yeah.
Throw somebody under the bus.
Yeah, take care of it.
But what, what.
Everybody's on the bus.
No, I think, yeah, part of it, from my perspective, is that it's very easy to become ingrown and not to have a mindfulness of the things that impact us locally. And that's why I think we can be more effective as a board in representing constituents if we are proactive when it comes to these legislative sessions. A lot of times, we're riding the coattails of what AMC is doing, or maybe a board that we sit on. But I think as a county, we should, we should be more effective in that regard.
Okay. Commissioner Storey?
Thank you. I do have another concern.
Okay.
Are we still on that topic, right?
Anytime.
Okay. I received concern from Sharon Platzer, the vice president of the Lutzen Trail Breakers snowmobile club, concerning about our trails and the ice and the snow that has affected most everybody in the county, especially at the Gunland, but also in the West End. Evidently, there is not any money right now available for opening the trails. The capital improvement is not available. It needs to be applied through the Federal Recreation Trail Grant, and that takes time and effort to get all that money, and it won't be available for this year. So, she would like us to discuss some alternative plans if possible, which would affect the tourism in our county. Probably, you know, sled, dog sledding and cross-country skiing and snowmobiling. So, I would like to open it up for discussion on, is there anything we can do as a county to supplement them, to help them get this done? I know that on Boreal, they were paying twenty dollars an hour for people to come and help getting the Gunland area open.
And Brady received an email also about the Vanderbilt ski trail having the same issues with coverage being blocked. So, and there's another snowmobile club, the Cook County Snowmobile Club. They, as far as I know, haven't approached anybody asking for money. But as you know, we already budgeted to take ninety-two thousand out of our two thousand seventeen budget to cover the two thousand sixteen budget. So, my gut reaction is, we don't have money. But Brady, tell me that you have a bucket somewhere that you dug up last night?
No, there's no, there's no bucket other than our fund balance. But I do recall a few years ago when the state not only made their regular funding, but provided additional money. And I don't remember if it was a similar situation, a big snow year or something.
Who do we contact?
Well, I mean, it comes through the DNR. I mean, I could start there and ask some questions.
Yeah, I would think Joe Russell, who was the, who was the DNR trail representative, he's, sits on our trail committee. He would be a good source of information to know if there's any state grants or funds available. I agree completely with Commissioner Storey. I mean, the trails are massive, and all of us who have been, are involved in snow sports now are working constantly to try to get those trails open, the snowmobile clubs in particular. So, we should pursue this quickly.
Request did go to Joe also.
Okay.
So, maybe a little bit of time, maybe a little bit of time will resolve. But I mean.
We don't have much time.
We don't have much time.
Yeah, Commissioner Gamble?
Yeah, thank you, ma'am chair. Yeah, it, I, I think whatever avenue is available that might tap into some of the surplus monies, I think there's been a lot of discussion about how do we help the Arrowhead region with the economic downturn, the, the impact of, of lost jobs and revenues. And I think to the extent that, that St. Paul is aware of the economic impact on us, we can't be hit on all sides. Therefore, maybe there would be some monies to demonstrate that they are mindful of, well, we've lost it on this end with some of that economic opportunity. Let's, we need to come to their defense. And so, I, I think it'd be good from the economic standpoint just to, to look at that and say. And I, and I do know, Commissioner Storey, in our discussions in the Arrowhead counties, that the, the state, the governor and the state are more receptive to short-term responses with those revenues than they are long-term commitments. And so, knowing that, I think this fits into that category.
Commissioner Mo?
Yeah, and, and maybe there's something that the county board would be willing to do on a short-term basis if, if we knew that funds were gonna become available from the state or federal government in a grant, that we could cover that until those funds are available, and something we should, we might wanna consider.
Jeff, you wanna do some follow-up?
I'll, I'll contact Joe and see what, what other avenues we can pursue.
Okay.
Make some phone calls this week, and hopefully have an update by next meeting.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, we have two, someone replaced recorder gnomes on the MCIS meetings. Commissioner Gamble?
So, did she have a discussion with Rena? I mean, based upon the information in our packet, that usually somebody from IT or wherever, was there a recommendation coming to us?
Right, ma'am chair.
Brady?
The members of that are typically the auditor, treasurer, the recorder, et cetera, and IT. So, Rena's attending a planning session on the twenty-first. And I think she and I could talk after that. She's attended the one in the fall and this one. And then, just maybe discuss between the two of us if she wants to continue because of that, or maybe she doesn't, and one of us would come forward at that time.
So, we'll table this?
Yeah, we could do it on the twenty-sixth, she should be back by then, so.
Okay, table till the twenty-sixth. Okay, it's not on here, but we did approve the list for WTIP, and I'm the commissioner for tomorrow morning. And I will be available to do that discussion. And speaking of WTIP, if any of you would like to tune in to First Thursday Conversation, it'll be Mr. Cadwell and myself, Mike Roth and Jay Aerosmith Decou, and Howard Hedstrom. WTIP did a request of some of the elected boards to take a year in review of two thousand fifteen and a look ahead on two thousand sixteen. The school is at a Rams meeting, so they are all unavailable to be on, otherwise, they would have been on. But seven PM on WTIP, if you would like to hear a small year in review of our struggles and obstacles in moving forward.
It's fantastic. It'll be archived, so.
And, ma'am chair, if I make a suggestion, if anybody has anything they think we should hit, send me an email.
We're compiling a list. I resent him a nice list. All right, with that, would anyone like to adjourn? That would be Gamble and Mo?
The rest of us at the state?
Nope.
Yeah, that's right.
You are not allowed to leave. Thank you guys so much, that one.
Thank you all.